Alright, you're live. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome. This is a city council workshop and joint meeting with our state legislators. Today is Monday, January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. It is six oh eight P M. Around the table, we are pleased to be joined by Representative Ambreen Rana, Representative Laura Suppika, Representative Amy Rader, and Senator Joe Baldacci. Also around the table, we have Councillor Beck, Councillor Tremble, Councillor Haas, Councillor Mallard, Councillor Dean, Councillor Fornier, myself, Council Chair Pelletier. Online, we have Councillor Leonard, and we also are joined at the table by City Manager Deb Laurie. So ahead of this meeting, we sent out sort of some talking points to get us started for conversation today on what the council sees as sort of our vegetarian challenges and hopes and dreams for the upcoming legislative session. We are also received from Senator Baldacci a list of some of your legislative priorities. And this meeting is really just to have an opportunity to hear from our legislative delegation about what you will be focused on and how we can work together on behalf of our beautiful city that we all know and love. So I'm going to ask City Manager Laurie to just do a very brief overview, not reading the whole thing, but just sort of hitting on some of the high points of the memo that we shared. In case there are folks who are watching at home who have not seen the memo, and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Sure. Thank you. So I think the interesting thing in this upcoming year is both bodies are going to be facing very similar challenges. I think we are going to see, from a state perspective, I think you are going to see flatter declining revenues. I've seen some of the revenue forecasting committee projections. As you know, on the municipal side, we're virtually wholly reliant on property taxes, and we know that that is not sustainable. I think we're all seeing very similar increases in costs in the coming years. And without new revenue streams, we're each going to have to make some difficult decisions regarding the level of service that we're able to provide to in the coming year. But we also know that we can, working together, we can do better for all of us. So I think from a municipal perspective, what we really want to be certain of is kind of protecting the core. The one, the couple of areas that this city and every municipality receives sort of those broad-based taxes from that allows us to continue to provide municipal service and lower the impact to our taxpayers are revenue sharing, aid to education. So any changes that result in less money to our municipality really does have a direct impact on our ability to continue to provide the services that our residents value, and it impacts people's property tax rates pretty significantly. I think as bodies, I think there is an, I don't think there's anybody in this state who isn't talking about property tax relief. But property tax relief can take a variety of formats. It could be at an individual level. I know I saw her on Senator Baldacci's list, and he's looking for ways to mitigate property taxes for seniors, also for property, for homeowners related to homestead. I'm sure all of those items will come back up again. From a municipal perspective, I think we're always supportive of how we can better serve residents at a lower cost, recognizing that if there are increases in exemptions, the one true way to drive property tax relief is to ensure that there's an increased reimbursement to municipalities. Because if you allow us to tax less, and we still have to raise the same amount of money, you don't actually reduce the property taxes to the individual homeowner. And if that's really what you're trying to get at, then there needs to be an exemption with an increase in the reimbursement rate. A couple of other things, especially for some of the larger municipalities that you may not think of necessarily as property tax relief, but it certainly all trickles down, increasing county jail funding. The city of Bangor pays just over four million dollars a year right now, but I'm Scott County. And the only way that we can raise that money is through property taxes. So any funding that goes to county jails actually provides some property tax relief. I think we're probably going to continue to have the conversation about general assistance reimbursement rates, increasing reimbursements to municipalities for state medical leave programs. I'd also would like to think that if you want to extend, expand some programs related to targeted property tax relief, look at perhaps expanding existing programs instead of creating new layers. So for example, if you wanted to do something related to, based on your income and your age, you would cap, let's say, the increase on property tax. You could actually capture that data right on your income tax form, your state income tax form. So you wouldn't actually have to create a new program. So just be thoughtful, maybe a little bit different about how we may do some municipal property tax relief. I think we met earlier today, the Service Center Coalition and the Mayor's Coalition, and Senator Matundo.
Yeah.
She was actually participating, and she had shared with us that you are, that the, I think it was the Appropriations Committee, or perhaps it was the entire legislative body, that submitted a letter to the federal government kind of pointing out the inadequacy of the funding related to special education. So when the I D A Act was passed in the early seventies, she was sharing that about forty percent of the costs were supposed to be funded by the federal government. And right now, they're funding about seven percent. So I believe that they're in the process of updating that letter and will be providing it. And it's certainly something we here locally can help raise the cause for, if you will, especially in March. Many local elected officials get the opportunity to meet with our federal delegation in Washington and sort of bring that forward, increase in school construction program funding. There are a couple of other items that we've come up with. We have a number of organizations that we're partners with. We believe you're going to see some bills related to a non-residential option for basic law enforcement training. Right now, it is a residential program only, allowing for billing for ambulance, non-transport services, and perhaps paramedic, paramedicine programs. Local option sales tax is always going to make a good run to come back. I think there's an ask by some to allow the use of TIF funding for municipal buildings. There's been some conversations about, by some groups, about considering some exemptions from the Paid Family Medical Leave Act if you're already meeting the requirements as they're defined, is, should we also be paying the F B? It continues to come up about whether you do a nonprofit property tax option. Those are sort of the bigger groups. When we get down locally, I think what we have an interest in at one point over the last year was requiring that the state get permission specifically from the municipality before granting a mobile syringe service license for public property, ensure the equitable treatment of casinos in Bangor, and that their license is not tied to the operation of harness racing. I'm not sure if that provision's still in there or not. When you look on the gaming control site, it appears that it isn't, but I'm not sure that that, and that their ability to operate in person supports that in falls within the purview of the gambling control board, which I also saw Senator Baldacci have submitted a bill for. Continue to investigate the reuse of Dorothea Dix facility and the grounds for non-state purposes. There was a... What were we?
I don't know.
Okay. I don't know.
We were a group.
We were a group.
Yeah.
So there was a group that came out of the last legislative session, and it was...
It was a discussion.
It was the focus.
And the, the end result is that the Department of Administrative Financial, no, the, the, the department that handles the management of state buildings does not want to give away proper, transfer any property. So we'd have to have a legislative act in order to transport, transfer this. They were, and even doing a lease with them was... But you are correct. We need to continue to focus on the issue. I would say that the administration has invested a significant amount of money in Dorothea Dix itself and in maintaining it and operating it.
They were really focused on what it could serve for a state purpose. And that was really sort of the narrow purview of that work group. I don't think that was, I'm not sure that we all knew what.
I don't think they had a state purpose clearly in mind. So I think they just wanted to hold it in reserve. But yes, you're right.
We'd also like to see if there's any opportunity to amend some portions of the sale of the tax-acquired property statute to lessen the delay in returning vacant properties to active living spaces. Increase cost to municipalities related to the need within each community to respond to individuals who are unhoused. Require at a minimum, a general emergency shelter is available in every county in Maine. What we're seeing is displacement, and displacement is not always best. Sometimes you're removing somebody from what may be a positive personal connection down the road. Also, consider increasing the level of funding to emergency shelters. Right now, it's about seven point two, seven point three million dollars a year. And it's been that rate now for three years in a row. I think the prior three years, it was six point five to six point eight million. So if this is going to play a role in our homelessness response in this state, then we need to be funding it at a level that allows it to do that. Develop, fund a medical, mental health, or substance use disorder response team. What you're seeing is the healthcare system is overwhelmed. What you're seeing are first responders and communities across the state are overwhelmed by the lack of access to care. What we have seen good luck with is some outreach or some street medicine. So if there's a way to deploy some additional resources to really augment the street work, the street medical work that's being done, that would be helpful. And then the continuation of L D seven eighteen, the nature's adequate bulky waste is available to properly dispose of wastewater treatment plant by biosolids. Yeah, that's kind of where I am.
That's the short version. So what I'd love to do is offer each of our representatives and our senator an opportunity to ask questions, you know, share what's on your mind, respond to some of these points, and then give us a sense of, is there anything that's on your priority list that we haven't mentioned here that we should be aware of that we can help you with as you head back to Augusta? Yes, Representative Rader.
Step down, so I feel like I reached out to D H A S and D A F S about Dorothea Dix in particular. I do have the report here. I believe the city manager has had it. If the councillors would like to look at it, I have extra copies. It was really enlightening to me, and yes, the state doesn't have a purpose now. But what was articulated to me is that they want to hold it in reserve in case they're able to build a hospital there, in case there is some state use that would meet a state and local need. We don't know what that is, but that is what we were told, what I was told today. I am dismayed to inform you that when I had the conversation about a shelter being in every county in Maine, I had that conversation with the Housing Chair, Chair of the Housing Committee, and it is the state's priority, the state's, or at least that committee's purview view that they shouldn't be opening more shelters. They should be focusing on housing. I responded with, do you think we would have a problem in Bangor if there were more shelters north of us? That was not something that had been considered. Unfortunately, one of the things that we see a lot, and one of the things that I know we're all trying to push back on, is when we're discussing solutions to problems that we have here in Bangor, all of the focus, the attention and the money is going to southern Maine. So we're getting real loud, we're getting real noisy, and we're trying not to let them off the hook. We know that the same problems are happening here, and I will continue to tell people we need shelters north of Bangor if you don't want Bangor shelters to be overwhelmed. And we heard that from Waterville when we fought to get extra funding for low-barrier shelters. Waterville said that if Hope House closed, it would cascade all the way down the state, and we would be in a full-blown crisis, even more so than we are right now. So I'm going to keep talking about that. I don't know that I can convince anybody, but as with anything, to hear from the council, to hear from municipal staff about that at the state level is crucial. And I know that you pay dues to Maine Municipal Association. Get loud with them too. If that is a priority, make sure that, the only way I've gotten stuff done in the legislature unfortunately is to be really irritating. So I invite you to join me in that. I hear about the local option sales tax. I've heard about that since I first was elected. It's something that I supported when it was put out first. I do know that a lot of municipalities are, have the same feelings about local option sales tax. Again, I would encourage Maine Municipal Association to make it a priority if that is something that is indeed a priority for Bangor. And to the, the response team for mental health crisis, crises and overdose, I'm just wondering, is that, are we talking statewide?
Yes.
Like administered by the state but placed in every municipality?
Correct. Whether it's street, street medicine in various forms, because street medicine could be medical. It could be mental health needs. It could be substance use. So there are a number of programs that do outreach. So for example, the options program.
Yeah, which has been pretty successful.
It has been pretty successful. I guess I didn't want to leave any stone unturned because what we do know, so for example, Maine Family Planning now has a mobile unit. And we have found that to be very helpful, being in the streets and actually addressing people's medical needs. It actually lessens the impact to all of the healthcare providers, but it's spread out over a pretty big distance. We also have some medical outreach that happens specifically within our homeless population that comes out of P C H D.
I was gonna ask.
And so that's really helpful too. But that's, a lot of those things aren't sustainable, and they're not getting to everywhere. So, and it creates a burden on our own first responders. If somebody could get street medicine, call it and say, Jace, you know, I've got a wound that isn't looking good. Well, we'll be there on Tuesday. That maybe lessens the impact on primary care, on emergency rooms, and on our E M S staff.
But there's also one point, four million that was specifically earmarked in the supplemental budget for this area to have a twenty-four-seven mental health crisis units like they have in Portland and like they're going to get in Lewiston. I don't know when that project is going to be, but the money was already specifically earmarked for, for our area.
I'll find out.
And one question, if I may, about that options team, because I mean, putting on my other hat as Together Place E D, they were putting together wound care kits
Right.
at the building today. So I know they're already stepping their toes in that, and that program, the funding is scheduled to sunset at the end of this year, correct?
I'm not familiar with the funding, and I'm not even exactly sure which department that come. I think some of it comes out of the, does some of it come out of the opioid settlement?
I don't know.
Or is it O B H, Old Press of Behavioral Health?
I think it's O B H.
Maybe it's O B H.
I think it's O B H too. I'm actually talking with one of our reps at O B H about like so much overlap. So I'm gonna talk to him about that.
But that's taking care of a segment.
Right. And they tend to do creep on that, because you know, if I'm responding to an overdose, but there's somebody here who has a wound that won't heal, I'm going to talk to them too. So what do we, again, we don't want to duplicate something that's already out there. So how do we bolster what's already out there and make it serve more people?
I would agree.
To your point about Maine Family Planning having that mobile unit. And as somebody who is at a not-for-profit that serves a particular population here, I think I'm grateful when not-for-profits step up like that, but I do think there needs to be a systemic statewide effort, because otherwise we're treating symptoms and we're not looking at the cure. And I, I don't, as somebody who is also looking at not-for-profit budgets all day, and I know how tight they are. So if I, if my not-for-profit is tasked with doing X, Y, Z, that might limit our ability to serve our core mission, and we're not actually helping people. So I get the point about the statewide effort. I don't know what that model is, but I like looking at what we already have, and options is a pretty good model.
Yeah.
So I want to see that go forward a little bit more.
And I'd like to see it expand, because not everybody is touched by options. So options is a overdose response.
Yeah.
And I do believe that Northern Light got some initial funding, and they're in the planning phases, I believe, for street outreach medicine, to stand up a street outreach medicine for it. We have a number of seniors, we have a number of individuals who may be from mobility issues or any other reason can't access primary care, and if we can bring it to them.
And that is definitely something, again, that I think it's great that Northern Light is doing that, but how can they get help from X, Y, and Z? Because we know that they're not...
They're struggling.
They're struggling. They're struggling mightily. Might I also point out that Northern Light is a not-for-profit that probably can't afford property taxes. Just gonna say that.
Yeah, I just want to ask, mention a couple of things that I think are important. One is that we're working, I've been working with Northern Light over the last couple of years. They received seventeen million directly from the supplemental budget. There's additional waves the state is going to try to help them in terms of stabilizing that facility. I just, and also in revenue sharing and aid to education, I think the governor has made clear in her statements that she's not going to fiddle around with the revenue sharing or the fifty-five percent. It's kind of core commitments. So I'm, I'm hopeful that that will continue. I would just want to highlight, as I'm sure people have seen, that Bangor has done well in terms of revenue sharing. I was served on the council during a different period of time when we had very little money in the, in the cash register or whatever you want to call it, okay? And it was very difficult, but I think Bangor has done well. I just want to say that we are working together as a united delegation. Representative Rana is going to be on appropriations. Representative Suppika is Chair of Leland Veterans. Representative Rader is Chair of Labor. I get to be Chair of two committees, State and Local Government, Inlet Fisheries, and I'm on a third committee called Health Coverage Insurance and Finance. So we're all going to be having our hands in different things, but revenue sharing, aid to education, and then increases to, for reimbursement rates for hospitals
Right.
has been key. So yeah, one of my priorities is the property tax issue with seniors. And however we get to a plan, my whole point is to get a discussion started and, and to offer a couple of different plans, because I've gotten, not just from people in Bangor and Herman, but around the state, who elderly people who are often widowed, being hit with double-digit increases. And it's, it's very concerning, particularly at a time when our nursing homes are having financial issues in the other parts. You know, I don't want to be there to, I want to encourage us to have seniors who can age in their own homes. I think that's a really key priority. I just want to say also that I think that additional money has been found for the Cedar Falls Mobile Home Community for main state housing. So they are bridging the gap.
Yes.
And that deal should happen. I think that's a really positive housing thing. And I just want to say thank you to you guys as city councillors. I know how hard you work, and I really appreciate the work that you're doing. And please come down to Augusta and say hi anytime. But your priorities are our priorities, and we're going to continue fighting for them. As you can see, revenue sharing and general assistance are on my list. So, and revenue sharing comes through state and local government, so I'm not sure how we're going to attack that, but...
You're likely to hear from some folks on revenue sharing.
Yeah.
Because Rev Two, Revenue Sharing Two came into play, and it was for the higher mill rate communities. And what you've seen happen is a lot of the larger communities, after they've done a revaluation. So just like we're in the process of doing, when you do a revaluation, you tend to pick up additional value, but it doesn't change your spending. So what happens is, is your tax rate goes down. So a lot of municipalities who've gone through a revow are seeing less in revenue sharing because their tax rate isn't as high. So that's likely, that's likely to pop up somewhere.
Latest figures that saw as a Bangor is going to, was eleven point one million or something. Yeah, in the most, in the most recent F Y, but I will...
I lost track.
Yeah, it's all right. It's all right. But no, I will keep track of that. But you know, I think that the, the last thing I want to mention is that there's issues that we have dealt with regarding... I've included a bond issue for the airport on L R eight-eight-seven, because that was something Tony Caruso had asked me to introduce back in twenty twenty-one. And I'm just reintroducing it now, because it never got off the appropriations table. And Representative Rana will be, will need to work on that one, but I think that would help.
She's gonna have a big bucket.
She's got a big bucket, yeah. But so that, I want to point your attention to that. I also added a resolve to, I don't know if we'll light the fire under anybody, but to have the Maine State Housing Authority consider purchasing the Bangor Mall for housing redevelopment purposes. I'm sure that, that will get a public hearing and a workshop, and I would like to see it added to the mix of issues to get some light under these people's butts in terms of doing something productive with that property. That's a massive waste for the city, so.
Can we put a pin in that and come back to it? Because I bet there's some opinions around the table.
Oh, go right ahead.
Representative Rana, you had your hand up like ten minutes ago.
Yeah, I would love to come back to that. I'm really curious what the council is thinking. Before I lose this thought, I was just responding to the, to the issue we were talking about, the, the public health issue that you had brought up, and I'm so, so grateful. I mean, I, I know that this is an issue that the, the city really cares about, and I was grateful to see that on the list, because it definitely aligns with my priorities this session. And I was just curious, yeah, I think that we definitely have to think creatively about how we're, how we're doing it. And I appreciate the acknowledgement of bolstering programs that are already in place rather than starting something from scratch. And I was just curious, I really have so much respect for Bangor Public Health.
They're huge.
They're so amazing, and I was curious, like, as we're thinking creatively, is there anything that we can do from the state level to give more support to Bangor Public Health? But I know that we had nurses years ago, or more people on the ground because of capacity and funding that doesn't exist anymore. So I just wanted to bring that point up and...
We'd take anything. We would love to have a couple of public health nurses on the ground. We've actually asked for them for months.
Yeah.
It hasn't come to fruition. I think what it also, the current H I V cluster has pointed out that public health and the responsibility for it resides at the state. So it becomes really difficult for us to execute strategies to actually address the needs in our community, because we don't have the authority, nor do we have the capacity. The capacity hasn't been funded to have a public health infrastructure in place. We've been really successful with a number of grants, which has allowed us to be a little bit more nimble. But there is a pretty big disconnect from a public health perspective that's community-centered versus what we're getting for a response from the state, so.
Let's connect before Friday and see if there's anything we can do.
Okay.
And yeah, just also just wanted to thank everyone for adjusting your schedule so that we could be here today. It's going to be a very intense week with sessions starting in just a few days. And I really hope that we can continue to gather as a group, especially because this, this is just the beginning. I wasn't able to get you a list of my bills, because the advocates that I'm working with, I, I wanted to make sure that they were, we, we were really lucky to have an extension with clocher. So a lot of people took the holidays off, so we're all rushing this week to get all of those priorities by Friday. So by the end of this week, you'll have a better sense of the things that I'm working on, but I'm just pulling up my notes. And I don't want to go, go on a, a, a long list of all of the things, but just know that my priorities continue to be, continuing to work on the, on the things that I was working on last session, expanding access to healthcare, recovery services, pathways to food access, affordable housing, of course, so all in line with priorities that support the people of Bangor and that, that the council is in support of. And I will say, I will just add one that feels relevant to the conversation. One of the bills that I'm submitting by Friday is to create a grant program for syringe cleanup. So that will have a big impact on all of the large municipalities, of course, and hopefully will also help us with the tracking of like what is given out and what's coming back, because there is some discrepancy there, and that'll help us make sure that that is taken care of. Representative Suppika?
Yeah, so my priority is basically to try to push against the continued underfunding of our important infrastructures in rural healthcare and transportation and just everything north of Lewiston. I, I, I'm, it was pretty eye-opening to see the budget discussions and how they ended last session and all the, the warnings that we were given about how we're not going to have enough money. And, and it was kind of a flip. We found ourselves like some folks advocating to spend more money that normally are fiscally conservative, and then those who are seen as, you know, socially liberal and spending money all... And then those who are seen as, you know, socially liberal and spending money all over the place were like, we have to be responsible. It was like this bizarre world, but what the message that got through to me loud and clear is that um uh you know, we're gonna have to be really tight with our budget. And um I've put a lot of, I'm putting a lot of my energy into, I don't wanna see cuts to our social services um at the, you know, because we need to to save money and pocket it away, you know? Um and I'm focusing really intently on uh main veteran homes right now, which I know a lot of folks in Bangor might not see how it's very relevant, but it's in my committee. Um uh we continually don't fund main veteran homes, which is nursing homes for our vets uh a- across the state as much as we should. And every year it's a scramble to keep two of them open. And surprise, surprise, the two that we are always in danger of closing is in Arustic County and Washington County. And so um I know it's part of the larger nursing home dis- discussion, which is another thing that I'm I'm pretty intent on, but rural healthcare. So um the bill that I'm throwing a lot of my way behind is to uh continue to permanently fund at the the level that is needed, our main veteran homes, much like with uh shelters. Uh we'll start to see uh like if they close in Arustic and if they close in Washington, we're gonna see it like.
It's it's already done.
Yeah, having people drive eight hours to go visit their loved ones in a nursing home. And so um I won't dive into the history of that, but that is like the 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 cause that I I ran on and the cause that I'm very passionate about. So um I still am gonna, you know, uh scream and yell about transportation. Um the the buzz term now is multi-modal, multi-modal use, um which I think is just a fancier way of saying like, you know, buses. Uh so uh but trying to get the state to give us more money to spend on public transportation locally. I love our highways. I drive cars, but I think it's time that we, um I would love to see a train. Would love to see a train, and I can give you the names of the specific people on the transportation committee who have fought against that, if you wanna call them at home.
Yeah.
But.
I can give you those names too.
Yeah, um but what the we were, we were told we're not getting a train, but we'd love love to have a better bus system. And it's like, well, where's that better bus system like? But that so transportation and connectivity of Bangor to the the rest of the state um and the the rest of the country, so yeah.
If I could just make a point about uh Representative Supica's work on veteran homes. Very frequently, we're not, it it's not a left versus right, uh red versus blue thing. Sometimes we're we're fighting for the rest of the state to realize that Bangor exists. And Representative Supica is fighting for two veteran homes that are north of Bangor. So the more voices we have joining us, the more times you all can testify, the better. Especially if it's something that you know will impact Bangor for the better or for the worse. Yeah, it can be annoying.
I I'm a I'm a big believer that like, you know, we have, you know, infrastructure still in place in central and northern Maine, and um by not adequately funding it because money is tight, we're allowing it to crumble. And then what do we have? We have these situations where we do have to reinvent the wheel. So um so I'm I'm uh going to be working on, and I know that the main veteran homes will lead lead into a larger discussion about nursing homes. So uh that that is where I'm putting a lot of my energy in. So there's, everybody wants to be on the housing committee. It's the new popular thing. So I feel like that's, I'm like, all right.
We in- we included in the supplemental budget eight million specifically for veterans homes, largely because of Representative Supica and some others.
Yeah.
Leadership on the issue and another eighty million directly for nursing homes because supposedly we're as a bridge to when they will get new reimbursement rates from the department, which takes a while, but it hasn't happened for a decade or longer. So and on the bus thing, I would just say that Senator Peggy Rotundo and I co-sponsored the train bill because the train bill, the way we thought we'd have the best chance of success of Lewiston and Bangor teamed up to two of the of the bigger cities in the state who who, but their s- solution after they convinced enough. And we actually passed it in the Senate. I just would say that. Um but the they want us to, they wanna invest in more buses, and now they're experimenting with buses in Lewiston. And Peggy is not impressed. Senator Rotundo is not impressed, and I don't know where that bus thing is gonna go. I do agree with Representative Supica that giving the communities more money for things like the Community Connector makes a b- bigger bang for your buck in terms of helping people. But so it's it's difficult. We have Department of Transportation is very committed to ru- of roads, asphalt, and pretty much that's it in terms of their vision of transportation. Sorry to.
No.
You know, giving the pessimistic but truthful.
Thank you. I'd love to give council a chance to ask questions or respond. What's on your mind? Councilor Trumbull?
First, maybe to get buses run on train tracks. But um no, I don't have anything.
The county would do that.
Nothing specific about this session. I just wanna point out, because we only meet with this group like this time every year. So we haven't had a chance to say, what a great job last session because seriously, without the Bangor delegation, the Hope House would not be open. It would not be being transferred to Preble Street, and we would be in a crisis situation with that. And the situation with PFAS and landfill, the uh that committee, and we had a great Zoom meeting with them and the delegation, and uh we found a solution that worked for a temporary solution. And and even though the taxpayers, not just in Bangor, but across the state, are seeing the tax, property tax bills go up, it would be much worse in Bangor if we hadn't seen the increases in uh revenue sharing and aid to education. So even though those are huge increases we've seen in Bangor, people are still feeling the the run of, you know? And and the problem, one part of the problem is, you know, the commercial real estate values are, they've been stagnant, they're raising slightly now. But during COVID, I mean, residential values all across the country just went crazy, so people are paying for it now. But I just wanna say thanks for everything you did last session for Bangor.
Other councillors, comments or questions? Councilor Beck?
I'll second with uh Councilor Trumbull said about your thank you for the work you did on getting funding for the Hope House uh and as well as the revenue sharing. Uh to that end, with revenue sharing increasingly, it has uh as a citizen, watching how much money gets stocked away in our um our reserves from our unassigned fund balance, uh fourteen point three million in the last three years. I feel like this is creating an opportunity where we can get creative with some targeted relief from council. Uh it's great to ask the state for help, um but it sounds like we need to do a little more homework on our end uh with some of that extra money uh to make sure we can, you know, find a way to, you know, like I said, create a program to to give some targeted relief to people and and give some of that back. The other question I had, though, is one of the things that came up here was about uh me, you know, seeking um municipal permission before licensing someone to become a mobile SSP. And I guess I worry about legislation like that because, you know, that kind of qualification for who should be licensed, who shouldn't be licensed, you know, that should come from a statewide agency. I just worry if some municipalities, you know, may just say no out of spite or stigma. Um whereas, you know, you've got a state board who's looking at their qualifications and things. Then my concern is that, you know, we're we're gonna be denying programs uh that are otherwise worthy, but because a certain municipality doesn't want that program to be there or, you know, that program at all uh to to come around, uh they'll say no. Uh and the last part was about the reimbursement for a hundred percent of costs incurred for uh related to homeless response. Uh I'm just wondering if, I know on the books with GA, there's a double indemnity law that if someone, you know, brings and, you know, dumps their responsibility on another municipality, um you can, you know, seek twice the cost, but it's hard to enforce. Um and I'm wondering if maybe there's a way to, you know, if we can't get our fellow community municipalities to cooperate with us, can we find a way to put some more teeth in that law? Uh you know, so we can bring them in with, you know, friendship and, you know, the goal of working together. At least have a stick to resort to and say, okay.
Years I've been talking about that stick.
Right, that is an excellent point because we discussed this when when we had to deal with general assistance. And there was a series of stories on the Bangor Daily. They talked about how other towns are dealing with their homeless problem, which is basically just a ship at the Bangor. So sharing that with the rest of the Health Human Services Committee last year, who I don't, I don't know if there's, there's a there aren't that many that are from north of wherever, and they were, oh, that couldn't happen, that couldn't happen. Well, uh it's happening, okay? And, you know, we do need to, I I would have felt better, and I don't know how my colleagues feel, if we had taken a general sys- uh the uh the GA program and made it I know you guys might not like this, it's centralized because it needs to be uniform in its application because you'll have towns that's basically are open or are open three hours a day. And then you have Bangor and Lewiston and Portland who are killing themselves to try to serve people, and they're gonna come to Bangor. I I I think there's a lot more that needs to happen. I think that's a good point, and I would love to see the city council take a take a outspoken position on that because it will help push the issue, but.
If I can just add to that, as part of our um work with the MMA's Legislative Policy Committee, one of the things that we were poking at the other municipalities to do was to um encourage Bill to actually make the General Assistance Program a a county program.
Yeah.
So administer it at the county level, and that way you don't have, you know, people driving
Right.
over bridges or across borders to drop people off in different places. It didn't quite get there, but we did um successfully lobby to have the um uh reimbursement rate um increase included in the MS MMA's policy. So that's what they'll be pushing as well, but I I agree with you. I think, you know, it's um a program, it should not be hard to access when somebody needs it because they're in crisis already and having a patchwork of different municipalities running on different services and some providing it and some not, even though they're supposed to be, does not serve the people who need it the most. And it's hugely inefficient to expect four hundred and fourteen units of government executing a state program.
It's a nineteen fifty's law.
Put it in sixteen.
That hasn't been changed.
Put it in sixteen counties or in every DHH.
Right. Sixty counties.
You already have an infrastructure.
Right, no, I think the county thing would be a great.
I in the past have put bills into, sorry, I didn't wait to be called on. And I put a bill in to to try to put more authority under the county government, and I've received a lot of pushback, and I say this. A lot of times it's like, well, we have weak government, and they're not capable of doing X, Y, and Z and kind of expanding into these areas. So I'm glad that like, we're all kind of thinking, no, actually, this this would be great. Um uh it was to to have more housing uh uh voucher programs be administered from the county, especially for folks who are coming out of um prison, you know? So it's not just like goes onto the municipality that they're released in, like Bangor, and then trying to find a place to live here, so. And I wanted to go back to the stick thing that you mentioned, and um when I was on council still, um there's a woman by the name of Valerie Lombardo who was found in Brewer. She was put in a um, she was found at the Brewer, uh um, some folks may remember this. When if at the time she was found at the Hannafords there, she was um, you know, uh acting a little strange. The police were called. Uh she was placed in a taxi cab and told to take her to the Bangor waterfront. And the taxi cab brought her to the water, like to that general area. She left out, left, walked, and ended up freezing to death on the banks of the water. And that was somebody who had was was interacted with by folks in in Brewer and they sent over here. And so and this was four years ago. So um at the time, there was the like, we should try to make friends, be friendly, and I'm not saying we have to make enemies like and and yell and scream. I I know sometimes I'm like, let's grab this stick and, you know, I make jokes about that, but it it happens often and and people are dying and and then, you know, people turn to us as a municipality, and I love that we have a bleeding heart. But I would love to see Brewer step up uh and and help out. We talk about how much we love their waterfront, uh you know, and their walking paths. But um I love our social services, and I appreciate everybody here at this table that invests in that and to keep those going as well, so, yeah.
And if I may quickly touch on um the syringe issue. While I understand the concern of a municipality feeling blindsided by the state, what we've heard today is that it would be very helpful if there was a statewide public health program to address mental health crises, drug crises. Removing the public health, the statewide public health expertise in giving syringe licenses doesn't make sense to me then. And I appreciate um the the legislation that's going in to uh provide grants for syringe cleanup because we know that has to happen. We know that that's a huge issue. And we also know that it's been a struggle to find people to even do that work, yes. So if we allow the CDC and public health experts at the state to continue to give out the licenses, but ask them, develop a program, develop anything so that we can get actual people ready to go in syringe cleanup. We'll we'll get grant funding for it. We'll do something for it. This is something that's very close to me, um uh because we found out over Christmas that my boy's fa- my boy's mother um died. And she had been infected with hepatitis because she used a dirty needle because that's all she had. So. Representative Rana?
Yeah, just to bounce off of that, um I'm sorry, Amy, and thank you for sharing that. Um, Councilor Beck, I I really appreciate you sharing uh your your take on that um on that issue. We're definitely in in alignment there. I wh- what I would love to see is maybe um just like more of a um and I think the issue that came up this spring kind of fostered this, like more collaboration and more um more of a, sorry, I just wanna, I wrote some notes on this. Um a more collaborative process so that um us as the state delegation and those who work directly with the CDC and the city and Bangor Public Health, we're just in communication more and able to um have those like hard conversations of like, hey, this doesn't work for us, and why was this decision made this way? And um just, you know, making sure that we're in a room together having those conversations. And I really appreciate that um back in the spring, that was happening. The city was coming and meeting with the CDC to to have those conversations. Um and I definitely agree with Councilor Beck where if this was a statewide change, there are definitely municipalities around that are not as supportive of harm reduction in these services. And I'm just so, so, so grateful that Bangor has been, like, there's a history of it, decades-long history of like Bang- Bangor Public Health being a leader in this, the city councillor being, the city council being supportive, city management being supportive, and um I think it's a really beautiful thing. And I think that's the reason that like we were able to address that HIV cluster so quickly. And um I think it's the reason that like less and less people um uh are are being diagnosed with Hep C and HIV. So I de- I definitely wanna acknowledge how big of a difference it makes that our city um out loudly is in support of those services, so. But with that, let's let's figure out how to make sure that there's more collaboration, that like you're hearing from us. For you, you know, we're able to set up meetings between you and and folks at the CDC so that any issues that come up, we can, we can handle administratively.
And I just wanted to provide a little bit of clarity. So it wasn't that the city approved the licensing. It was that we have a say in what municipally-owned property a license is issued for. So we're not looking to become the public health expert on who or which should not be licensed to provide syren- local syringe service like in our community, but um specifically where they're located. So um that was really our intent with that, and I had had this conversation with the CDC. And I had told them, you know, this is kind of our concern. You know what our concern was. And they said, yes, we agree. We need to refine the process. And I said, it would be great if we could come together and develop language cooperatively. So I had sent them a draft bill, um and they have just said, you know, we're not gonna speak. We'll just testify. We're not gonna give you any feedback on that bill. We'll just wait until it comes forward, and it will be testified to. Um and so we meet with the CDC all the time. Um so um it's really, so here's what the CDC does. They receive an application and they say that the applicant knows best, and so therefore they grant the license. And that's what they told us last week when we had a meeting with them. And so we're talking to them about, you know, here are some um best practices where and that are um put out by federal and other sources about how can we develop best practices? How can we develop data-driven um, make a data-driven decision? And they're just not there yet.
Could you share those best practices you've asked?
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Thank you. And um Lewis, is it um, is this bill coming from the administration or?
No, it's a bill we'd like to have.
Okay, you're.
And and what we had asked, and what I had to ask the CDC earlier this year is they said, this is something we'd like to clarify, and I will share with you that um there was a mobile surprise, there was another mobiles, a mobile service provider licensed in the city um earlier this year, and it was licensed.
And it was licensed specifically with Wabanaki Public Health, and it was licensed specifically at the encampment. Because Heel had a license there previously. And so they reached out to us and said, hey, we wanna do this, and we said, of course. Um so we're always happy to do those kinds of things.
Been an adjustment.
There has been, but there is no, they don't have to. And it's great that we are right now, but we need some framework, some best practices, some data-driven um strategies that we're using to ensure that people have access to what they need.
Do you have a, the memo you were referring to? Is that something, you said you had a memo of talking points or something?
Uh I have best practices that.
No, by and then in terms of legislative prior.
Yeah, I've got it right here and I'll make sure to email it to you.
Obviously, we, we're probably trying to glean from some of that to bills, if you want us to interview.
So I was making asterisks while you were talking. So I'd really love to have, and it sounds like perhaps Representative Raider might be with us um to get a bill submitted that we're to require emergency shelter be available, a general emergency shelter be available.
I've currently put in a bill uh that came from the Bangor area homeless shelter about expanding funding. So I've at least got the funding portion in.
If we could expand, right now there are fourteen counties that have shelters, but only twelve counties actually have generals. So for example, Washington County, if you go on the Maine State Housing website, it talks about navigation services available. Um that's not a shelter. Um so if we had a shelter available in every county, I'd love to have increased funding for uh emergency shelters, which it sounds like you're on. Um we'd like to see some, um some requirement that CDC at least can contact. How I found out that there were mobile syringe site licenses authorized in the city was when I received the notice from the CDC that they had granted licenses for these two particular places. That's not how a municipality should be verified. Um and then the other one is ensuring that we continue to have enough bulky ways to dispose of the bio-solids, those were sort of.
I know we're getting um short on time, I don't wanna keep everybody late. I, I did wanna come back to the pin that we stuck in the mall, um with the caveat that we're currently uh in a lawsuit with the mall, so there's not a lot that the council might be able to say. Except I think, um please correct me if I'm wrong, we all agree that that area is in dire need of redevelopment and could be much better utilized in terms of housing. Everyone here has heard me talk about, I would love to have a mixed use development out there with retail and housing and all sorts of things. But um.
So I under- and I understand that, uh that's fine, I think that's gonna be a discussion. And I don't so much, uh I think what's going on in court, people will know about from what's going on in court. I just wanna say I totally agree with Counselor Mallor's previous point about the Norvex Dow building. Speaking of buildings that need to be. What we can do with that, but uh you know, I'm looking forward to the city's update on that. But I do think that there's a lot of untapped potential at the mall area. And we can preserve retail that's already there, but there's still plenty of space for.
Much good space. And we have recently, in the last year, updated our ordinance to allow for housing development in that area. So it's ready and ripe for, for redevelopment, we need to. Get started.
Question about that, and I'll just like put it out there for like, you know, email me, talk to us later, whatever. Article in the BDN about how it is very difficult to build that missing metal. That developers are having issues with that missing metal, what at the city level? What ordinances need to be adjusted a little bit? What at the state level do we need to uh work on to make it easier for the developers to actually develop the housing that we need?
Well, one of the things that has been very helpful to us was the arca dollars. So if we think about the ten acre plot that we have on Grandview Avenue, um we were able to buy down the cost of infrastructure to make it financially feasible for developers to come in and build at least seventy-five units that will be for that eighty to one twenty of the AMI. So it's, right now it is the cost of development, it just makes the, the numbers not work for developers. Um and so I think infrastructure development for sure. I think we've, to my knowledge, done all the work we need to do from an ordinance perspective to be able to permit those sorts of bills, and this really just comes down to the dollars.
If dollars and cents don't work, make sense right now. I think the last numbers I saw, and it was a couple of years ago, is that the cost to construct multi-heated or even single-flamely homes per unit and to fit in that area in median income. It's upside down by about twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollars per unit. Um so as Council Chair Philatier said, city chose to buy down the infrastructure. We'll, we'll basically give you the length, we'll buy down the sewer, the water, the streets, the electrical or whatever we can to drive the per-unit cost down and make it affordable. And that's, so if you really want it, if you really want the Bangor Mall, you could actually try to find us another four million dollars for sewer upgrades.
We'll be in August tomorrow and all of us will look around.
If you look under the couch cushions, that'd be great.
If you think about some of that empty space at Dorothea Dix, that land could be very valued.
Totally, yes, I agree.
And the information that I received today was that they are holding it in reserve with the intention of a new hospital there. They realized the need, what there, what's been holding them up is that they've been trying to demolish two buildings for years now. And they were supposed to do it in twenty twenty-four and got pushed out another couple of years. Supposed to do renovations on the IFNW building there. Renovations got pushed out another couple of years. So unfortunately, I'm still looking for a plumber for my house. And I think that's a crisis and they're looking for actual huge buildings and it's even, even worse when you're looking at large scale projects.
Along that Dorothea Dix, think about adding some additional space to UTC. Because UTC is hemmed in by um the footprint of that property line. And UTC is where your next plumber is coming from. And where our next contractor is coming from. And if they don't have the capacity and the space to expand, it may limit our opportunities in the future. So maybe they'd be willing to do that much.
When they say about a new hospital, I would just add that we put in, that, that they got a million dollars to put brand-new windows in all of the place, all Dorothea Dix, just on those last budgets. So hopefully they're not gonna demol.
No, the, the buildings that they did, that they're demolishing are the ones that people can't even go in anymore.
I think one of them's down now.
Which one was that?
Fuller Pavilion is down.
So it's um, is it Eden or Hedden that remains?
Yeah, I think.
I got to tour Dorothea Dix for my job, so.
And I would just say to you all that as you have bills come before you. Um if there's information that you need that you would be helpful to tell the story, please reach out to us. We're more than happy to pull that information together, and even if we don't, we'll draw on our network of people and kind of pull to tell the story because we know the story is coming. Um so we're always happy to do that. Um the only other thing, and I know you all are looking at a different, a bunch of different rules for the coming session. So it would be really helpful if, if we knew, I know there's some conversation about what concept drafts can be and concept bills. And making sure that we have adequate time to actually be able to provide testimony. Because boy, towards the end last year, things were happening wild and wailing. And it makes it really diff- I'm sure it was difficult for all of you to keep track of all of the pieces.
I recommend signing up for the um mailing list for all the committees. Because they put out the list of the bills that will have public hearings, the list of the bills that will have work sessions every Monday.
Well, we can get those right off the website, because that's posted on the website.
It is, but the emails go out a little faster because the clerks are on it and they're faster.
We have three thousand emails a month. It's, it's really, it's really a slog, man.
Is there anyone who hasn't had a chance to speak who has something to contribute, or we call it a night? Hey, thank you for taking the time and making the time in your encounters to be here. It's really valuable for us to hear your words uh in your voice, and so thank you for making it.